All right, we're going to call this meeting.
Recording in progress.
This is a meeting of the City Council. It is Thursday, July 10th. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the city of some of our website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Councillor Ba.
Present.
Councillor Wilson.
Present.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Councillor Scott.
Present.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councillor Burnley.
Present.
Councillor Said.
Councillor Strezzo.
Present.
Councillor Klingon. Councillor Davis.
Here.
With seven councillors present and three absent, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, everyone. My name is Lance Davis. I'm the vice president of the City Council, be presiding this evening in the absence of a president as Councillor Dana Newfield has resigned to pursue other exciting things. So happy to lead you all through the process. First, let me let you know that pursuant to Rule 32, let it be known that the City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there any councillors wishing to say a few words about members of our community this evening? Okay. Seeing none, everyone who is able, please rise and we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12th. Any discussion? All right, that item is approved. The next order of business is the election of a president of the 2025 City Council for the remainder of the year. The floor is open to nominations. Councillor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to nominate Councillor Davis as council president.
Councillor Ba nominates Councillor Lance Davis for president to other nominations. All right, seeing none, is there motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
There's a motion to close. Any objection? Seeing none, that motion carries. Nominations having been closed, will the clerk please call the roll on the question, "For whom do you vote?"
Yes, indeed. On the election of a president, for whom do you vote? Councillor Ba.
Councillor Lance Davis.
Councillor Wilson.
Councillor Lance Davis.
Councillor Ewan Campen. Councillor Scott.
Councillor Davis.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Councillor Davis.
Councillor Burnley.
Councillor Davis.
Councillor Said. Councillor Strezzo.
Councillor Davis.
Councillor Klingon. Councillor Davis.
Councillor Davis.
With seven votes, Councillor Davis is the new president of the City Council for the remainder of 2025.
All right, thank you all. All right. Councillor Davis has been elected president of the 2025 City Council. All right, the next order of business, well, I'll continue to preside now in my new capacity as president and we will elect a vice president to replace me, as irreplaceable as I may seem. Is there any, the next order, we did this already. Next order of business is to, is the election of vice president. The floor is open to nominations. Councillor Wilson?
I nominate Councillor Will Mba.
Councillor Wilson has nominated Councillor Ba. Are there any further nominations?
Motion to close.
There's a motion to close. Seeing no objection, nominations are closed. Nominations having been closed, will the clerk please call the roll on the question, "For whom do you vote?"
On the election of a vice president, for whom do you vote? Councillor Ba.
Councillor Will Mba.
Councillor Wilson.
Councillor Mba.
Councillor Ewan Campen. Councillor Scott.
Councillor Ba.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Councillor Ba.
Councillor Burnley.
Councillor Ba.
Councillor Said. Councillor Strezzo.
Councillor Ba.
Councillor Klingon. Councillor Davis.
Councillor Ba.
With seven votes, Councillor Ba, Councillor Ba is the vice president of his council for the remainder of 2025.
Congratulations, there is an oath at office for that one, too. Councillor Ba, would you please come up to take the oath? Ooh, this may be the first time that someone is sitting in the first seat but voting last. Well played, councillor, well played. All right, everyone, now, back to work. We have a few items that we're going to take out of order, but not in the sort of normal sense that we do. We're actually going to take the regular order of business first, although we will take up, with item 4.1, we will take up item 10.7 along with that, out of order. Then we will take up items 10.1 and 10.4, and then back to the regular order of business. Yeah, that's essentially the plan. At some point, after we take up items, in that then regular order, after 7.5, we're going to take items 10.5 and 10.6 out of business as well. The reason for that, there are a number of items that require two-thirds vote and we will have a couple of our members who are away this evening joining us remotely so that we will have the ability to, if everyone were to vote in favor of those items, at least we have the possibility of having a two-thirds vote. Of course, if not, then no worries, then that, you know, then we go on. We'll then have a brief recess and we'll come back and we will finish the items in the regular order. So, not quite as clean-cut as usual, but we're trying to balance the reality of folks this time of year and make sure that we get the city's business done. So, would the clerk please call the next item?
Item 3.1 is a small wireless facility from Crown Castle Fiber for facilities on a new pole at 10 Hawthorne Street.
All right, I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
I have Brandy Spazano.
Brandy Spazano?
Good evening.
Give us one minute. There you go, go ahead.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to present. We are just upgrading our existing outdated equipment. Essentially, this build was from quite a while ago. We need power converted for the updated antenna and the updated radios inside the shroud. Fairly simple.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any comments or questions from the members? All right, seeing none, then that item is approved.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from EverSource to install approximately 166 feet of conduit in Broadway and Mount Vernon Street from manhole 1784 to a point of pickup at 44 Broadway.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item? Jackie Duffy.
How are you tonight? Congratulations on the presidency.
Thank you very much.
We would like to install 166 feet of conduit in Broadway and Mount Vernon Street to provide electric service to 44 Broadway, and it's for an 81-unit building and two retail spaces.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, that item is approved.
Item 3.3 is a grant of location from EverSource to install one new manhole and approximately 76 feet of conduit in Given Street from utility pole 383 over 1 through new manhole 32650 to a point of pickup at 156 Highland Ave.
All right, this public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy of EverSource would like to install one new manhole and approximately 76 feet of conduit from Given Street for electric service to 156, I'm sorry, 156 Highland Avenue.
All right, anyone else to speak on the item? All right, seeing no more hands, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? Seeing none, that item is approved.
Item 3.4 is a grant of location from EverSource to install one new manhole and approximately 30 feet of conduit in Warren Street from the new manhole 32350 to a point of pickup at 8 Medford Street.
I now declare the public hearing to be open. Anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy of EverSource would like to install one new manhole 32350 and 30 feet of conduit in Warren Street to provide electric service to 8 Medford Street. This will be 18 residential units.
Anyone else to speak on the item? Seeing no more, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, that item is approved.
Item 3.5 is a grant of location from EverSource to install approximately 40 feet of conduit in Moreland Street from utility pole 236 over 9 to a point of pickup at 77 Moreland Street.
I now declare this public hearing to be open. Anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy of EverSource would like to install 40 feet of conduit on Moreland Street to provide electrical service to 79 R. Moreland Street.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the item? Come on right up to the dais here and please just introduce yourself, your name and address, and go right ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nick. I actually reside at 77 Moreland Street. I did take a look at the plans via email that was sent to me and it does say an approximate pickup. The problem, though, is that we are very concerned as to how approximate this can be. I, as an electrician myself, you know, this is, it's electricity, it's an unforeseen kind of situation, something you can't see and it can hurt you. And my, you know, experience running 2,000 amp services for a brand-new Dunkin' Donuts and for a 14-unit apartment, we want to know exact. We don't want approximate because if this impedes or imposes on our, you know, our private property, we would like to know because if it does, this would require an easement from the landlord and, you know, from us personally. So, we want exact, not approximate, just to make sure.
Okay.
Can you say your last name?
Be of his honor. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak on the item?
No more.
Okay, no more hands, I declare the public hearing to be closed. Ms. Duffy, were you able to hear the concern that was?
Yes, we can set up a meeting with the owner of 79 and 77 if that will help.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we put those folks in touch with each other? Councillor Wilson?
I think I have the customer's information.
This with a meeting with the speaker?
We can certainly add conditions. We can also send it to committee if there's, although we probably won't have another committee meeting until September.
Mr. President, that was my concern, is that they're looking into this work. If it's conditioned, that might be able to be satisfied then on its own over the summer.
Madam Clerk, we can add a condition that the folks at EverSource have a meeting with the neighbors to address the concerns? Do we need to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, Councillor Wilson so moves. Any discussion on that proposed amendment to the application? All right, seeing none, that is approved. Is that satisfactory? If we, folks from EverSource have a meeting with you, you can get everything squared away and make sure that it's, there's no concerns? All right, very well. So, that'll be approved with the condition that the utility meet with the neighbors to sort out the exact location and make sure everything is acceptable. All right, very well, thank you. Next item.
Item 3.6 is a grant of location from EverSource to install approximately five feet of conduit in Prospect Street from manhole 23059 to a point of pickup at 86 Prospect Street.
I now declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy of EverSource would like to install five feet of conduit in Prospect Street to provide electric service to 86 Prospect Street. It's going to be a 29-unit building.
Anyone else here to speak on the item? No more hands? All right, then that public hearing is closed. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, that is approved.
Item 3.7 is a grant of location from EverSource to install approximately 17 feet of conduit in Prospect Street from manhole 23058 to an approximate point of pickup near 110 Prospect Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy of EverSource would like to install 17 feet of conduit in Prospect Street. This is to enhance the system reliability in the area.
Okay, anyone else here to speak on the item? No more hands? All right, declare the public hearing closed. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, that item is approved.
Thank you, have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you, Jackie, take care.
The next item is item 4.1, a resolution by councillors Klingon, Burnley, Ewan Campen, Scott, Said, Mba, Strezzo, Wilson, and Davis in support of Teamsters Local 25 in their labor dispute with Republic Services.
All right, can we take up item 10.7 together with this?
Of course. Item 10.7 is a communication of the mayor conveying a communication to Republic Services urging expeditious resolution to contract negotiations.
Very well, Councillor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President, signed me on as well. Pinch hitting for Councillor Klingon today, but this is an issue that's dear to my heart. Two things I want to say about this issue. Everyone following the news understands that the local Teamsters are on strike against Republic Services in 14 cities in Massachusetts. And this is not a union against some small-town trash company. This is the second-largest waste disposal unit in the country. Bill Gates is the largest shareholder of this company and the CEO makes 170 times more than the average trash collector. So, this is really the corporatization and consolidation of wealth at the expense of workers, which is typical, but it's in our backyard, so it's something we have to speak up about. So, I'll let the Teamsters speak for themselves, too. There's Bridget Quinn from Local 25. I'd like to sponsor her to speak and just encourage everyone. I think most people already signed on to support this item.
Okay, Councillor McGlaughlin, we'd like to sponsor Bridget Quinn to speak. Seeing no objection. Ms. Quinn, please introduce yourself for the record and go right ahead. Thank you for joining us.
So, good evening, for the record. My name is Bridget Quinn and I'm the legislative director for Teamsters Joint Council 10 New England. I just want to thank, start by thanking Councillor McGlaughlin and Klingon for sponsoring our resolution, of course, for the great support that we have with all the councillors signing on. So, Local 25 represents 450 workers at Republic Services and our members have tough, demanding jobs and they provide such an important service to our communities. For the past several months, Teamsters Local 25 has been bargaining with Republic Services for a new contract. We have a few demands, very simple demands, higher wages, affordable and accessible health insurance, and safe working conditions. Republic Services has repeatedly refused to bargain in good faith and as a result, this company has caused a strike that is disrupting trash collection in 14 communities around eastern Massachusetts. And it's also left small businesses, like the ones here in Somerville, scrambling for alternatives for their trash collection. And so, make no mistake, this strike is completely and totally the fault of Republic Services. And it's also not an isolated incident. Republic Teamsters in California, Illinois, and Georgia, and Washington State have also been forced to strike and now we have 2,000 Teamsters on the strike line because, again, this company refuses to pay its workers competitive wages and respect them in the workplace. Republic, as we know, would be nothing without its workforce, right, its workers that worked hard every single day to provide service to our communities. But for far too long, this corporation has forced our members to endure unsafe working conditions and economic precarity. Our members will stay on strike until they get the contract that they deserve, because none of our demands are unreasonable in any way, shape, or form. We're calling on Republic Services, which is the second-largest waste company in the nation, to provide the same wages and benefits that local companies like Capital Waste provide to our Teamsters. If a local company can afford it, so can Republic Services. They can and should take care of our members and make sure that they go to work and save working conditions and come home at the end of the day and can provide for their families. And so, I just want to close by thanking the members of the City Council here for supporting the workers, you always do, and we very much appreciate it every, anytime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councillor McGlaughlin, anything further? Any further discussion? Councillor Strezzo?
Sure. I'm proud to sign on as co-sponsor of this and I want to commend Teamsters 25 for the hard work you're doing. We stand with you, I stand with you, and I think that Republic Services has demonstrated a clear contempt for its workforce by choosing not to come to the table and bargain and respect the workforce. I also think it shows contempt for its customers and I think that's unacceptable and just shame on Republic Services. And I encourage if you have public services in your business or in residential to reach out to them and let them know that this is unacceptable and to stand with the Teamsters and stand for fair wages and to respect employees. So, that's all I have to say with that, we're with you. Thank you.
Councillor Ba?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Councillor Klingon and Councillor McGlaughlin for putting this forward, also to thank the director, Director Quinn, for speaking. I just want to make a highlight because when, for members of the public, when they say the demands are not unreasonable, I just say caption from the resolution. Like, it says, "These workers have been bargaining in good faith for fair wages, affordable health care, safe working conditions, and adequate paid time off, standards that reflect both the dignity of their labor and the financial success of their employer. And Republic Services has failed to meet these reasonable demands and has refused to return to the negotiating table, prompting Teamsters Local 25 to initiate a 24 and 7 strike onto a fair agreement as reached." I'm telling you, this is like, Republic Services, these are greedy pigs. If, I don't think that most of these issues that people are negotiating, just like she said, I just want to share that for members to know that this are like just basic stuff that workers need to preserve their dignity that they are not giving to them. So, thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can honestly say I've never been happier to have my trash not picked up. This is, you know, I'll admit, I've had a commercial Republic Services dumpster for over a decade, but this is fundamental to workers' rights, even though it is hot out there and it is stinky out there. One thing that I did want to highlight, though, in this is the mention that there are apparently over 100 residential and commercial customers here in Somerville, particularly as it relates to the residential. I've heard from several large buildings in my district who are concerned about the heat, about smell, and about the fact that it's really going to be a logjam situation for them. I would like to request that the administration consider the possibility of extending some of our municipal tipping. I know it's not the city's policy, it's been not to service buildings over a certain size, but for the duration of this particular labor conflict is a way to both support our residents and to support the workers who are fairly on strike here to get good working conditions. I'd like the administration to consider what we can do to facilitate residential trash pickup for these buildings that are left high and dry by Republic Services right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, for the council item, does that request a copy to be sent to Republic Services? Just want to make sure it does. If it does not, since we have a copy of the letter that the mayor sent, if we could include copy of this as well so that it be very clear that both branches of the city government feel strongly on this issue, make sure that gets to the right folks. Very well, thank you, and thank you for coming here this evening to speak on it. All right, so that item is approved, those two items are approved, and that will take us to our first out-of-order item for the evening, I believe, Madam Clerk. That's item 10.1. So, we're going to do 10.1 and 10.4, then go back to the regular order of business.
Item 10.1 is an order by Councillor Burnley that the Director of Mobility address in writing the steps the department will make to assess the feasibility and need to install a speed bump on Cherry Street between Highland Avenue and Summer Street.
Councillor Burnley?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I'm going to be very quick about this one. I've had a constituent call me probably 15 times about this particular issue and I understand why. It's a safety issue when we have cars speeding through our streets, when they could harm one of our residents. I just want to hear from the director that they are looking to assess whether this would be a good street for a speed bump to just slow down a relatively small road that connects to some of our more major streets, to ensure that traffic calming allows everyone to live safely and calmly in our community. But I'd just like for this to be approved.
Thank you, Councillor Burnley. And just for clarification for folks who are thinking, this is between Highland and Summer, there were speed bumps installed on this wider section of Cherry between Summer and Elm Street, right? So, this is, okay, very well. So, that item is approved, thank you for that. Madam Clerk?
Item 10.2 is a resolution by Councillor Burnley condemning Harvard's attack on its graduate student union.
Councillor Burnley?
Thank you. Mr. President, through you to the clerk, I'd like for this to be, the language of this resolution to be replaced with amended language that the clerk has before her and for her to read out the language after we take a vote.
So, Councillor Burnley moves to replace the item with the revised version that was sent to the clerk. Madam Clerk, could you have that version?
Yes, indeed. You can see it on your screen in just a moment and I will read that into the record as well. Whereas education, research, and academic inquiry are values intimately connected to the lives, careers, and passions of Somervilleans, and whereas the Trump administration has targeted education and research, including grants, funding, and academic freedom at Harvard University, and whereas Harvard University employs many residents of Somerville, and whereas labor unions play a critical role in workplace and economic justice, and whereas Harvard University is attempting to strip union protections away from workers who are in tenuous positions in science research, including by removing hundreds of students from the Harvard Graduate Student Union, now therefore be it resolved that the Somerville City Council strongly opposes these actions by Harvard, is opposed to all forms of union busting, and urges Harvard administrators to undo these actions, and be it further resolved that Somerville urges Harvard administration to seriously engage with the demands of the Harvard Graduate Students Union on issues from fair pay to protections from harassment and discrimination to resources for non-citizens, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to Harvard University Administration and President.
All right, that motion is before the committee. Any discussion on the motion to replace the item with the revised version? All right, seeing none, that is approved. The revised version is now before us. Councillor Burnley?
Thank you, and thanks to the clerk for reading that out. It really tells one piece of a very troubling story that has been going on for years and, frankly, it's a story that's older than Harvard, older than this country. It's a story of labor, it's a story of the question of what a worker is, who are workers.
Councillor Burnley, can I interrupt you briefly, please? I noticed that our closed caption is not working and so I'd like to declare a brief recess just so we can get that working because we want everyone to be able to participate in all of the items, including this important one, if you don't mind. We'll take a brief recess to see if we can get that operational and we'll come back as soon as it is.
Okay.
Two, three, four, five, six. All right, I'll call this meeting back to order with regard to, we don't need to call the roll, because I can see that we have a quorum. All right, so not quite sure how soon we'll be able to get this issue addressed. My sincere apologies, we are actively working on it, but it doesn't seem like something that is likely to be fixed in the next five minutes. So we're going to continue on. Captioning is available, so this is effectively captioning for the room, for the chamber itself. Captioning is available for folks watching on Zoom, so hopefully they are already aware of that, because they're hearing and seeing my voice through that captioning, and my apologies. This is a new addition to our proceedings, which I'm very happy that we have. Unfortunately, we don't have it at the moment. So all I can give you is that we're working on it and doing our best that we can to get it back up and running. Counselor Burnley, my gratitude for your forbearance, you have the floor.
Thank you. To the chair, let me try to recollect my thoughts here.
Feel free to take it from the top, sir.
Well, it's off the top, so we'll see what I come up with. But the point I was trying to make was, we are seeing some incredibly disturbing and frankly disgusting actions by the largest higher education institution, not only in our great Commonwealth, but in the nation. An institution which has billions, billions of dollars, is attempting to remove 973 workers from their union on the argument that they should have never been considered for the union anyway, which is an argument that the Harvard Grad Students Union has faced since they tried to unionize initially, many years ago, this argument that they are not workers and they are not entitled to the benefits of workers. Now, this is something that I view as incredibly dangerous and existential for workers of all kinds and backgrounds, because it's a fight that predates Harvard, predates this nation, and gets to the heart of the fight for labor. When we define what a worker is in such a way that we remove people who do the hard work to make our institutions run, to clean our facilities, to make our society function, we are allowing the degradation of the dignity of every single person on this planet, the degradation of all workers. This is an injury that strikes at the heart of not only unions, but of every person who gets up and goes out the door trying to provide for their families, trying to provide for themselves. When we define workers as less than, and to say that they do not have the rights that all people are deserving of, we not only besmirch, but degrade our collective dignity, and that is what Harvard is attempting to do through reliance on a besieged National Labor Relations Board, through the force of knowing that if they are able to remove these workers from the union, they will essentially cut out a third of their dues. They will be effectively trying to bankrupt this union. And like so many other fights, we know that this will only be the beginning. If they are able to rip apart unions years after they have been certified, years after they have negotiated contracts, there is nothing stopping them from moving forward and doing this in such a way that they can attack all unions. And at a time where work itself is being destroyed by technology, AI, the mass layoffs of various industries, we as a community need to stand up for all the workers in our community and make sure that Somerville is a union town. And to that point, I would like to sponsor a Somerville resident and a member of the Harvard Grad Student Union, Dorothy Manovich, to speak up to this issue. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley moves to sponsor speaker. Is there any objection? Seen none. Please approach and just introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Hello. Well, first of all, thank you so much, Counselor Burnley, for bringing this resolution and for having me here to talk a little bit about it and what this means. So my name is Dorothy Manovich. I have been a Somerville resident for five years, living in Ward 2 in Union Square, and I have, you know, throughout the course of my graduate program, I have been able to live a good life here because of my union and the things that my union has fought and won for me. Some of these things include being able to pay for dental surgery that I would not have been able to afford otherwise, which was reimbursed through union healthcare funds, protections from overwork, protections from harassment and discrimination that I've benefited from in my workplace, and that's, you know, just kind of like the top of the list of some of the union protections that we won, is the Harvard Graduate Students Union that have made my life and my work livable here in this amazing community. And so I also wanted to highlight in addition to some of the points that Counselor Burnley has already highlighted, kind of what is happening right now for the Harvard Graduate Students Union at Harvard and what this means for us, right? So as Counselor Burnley said, Harvard University is attempting to strip union rights fully from 973 workers, based on our most recent analysis, and partially from an additional 1,000 workers. And this constitutes an attack on those workers specifically and on our union in general. These workers are also concentrated in STEM fields, which have already been attacked by the Trump administration. These are workers who are already under extreme stress and labs that are already seeing funding cuts. They're being attacked by the Trump administration, and now they are being attacked by their own university. And not only is this just a massive problem, it's also illegal. This is pretty explicitly illegal, and this is something that with a functional NLRB, we would have many more options to fight this, but because Harvard thinks they can get away with it, and because labor law and the NLRB is what it is, we are in a position, we are in a more difficult position than we ought to be. And so I want to highlight specifically what this means for the workers who are cut, who are attempting, or Harvard University is attempting to cut out of our unit. So these are 1,000 workers who are going to lose the wage protections that we have in our contract, any new wage increases that we win, if Harvard is successful, they will not have access to those. They will not have access to the harassment and discrimination protections that are so important to us and that we are fighting to expand in our next contract. And as I'm sure a lot of you are aware, Harvard has had massive, massive scandals, especially related to gender-based and sexual harassment over the past decade, some of which were centered specifically in my department. And so in addition to this, we also have funds to help people with emergencies when, you know, they lose their housing, when they have a family member who passes away or gets sick and they need to travel and have expenses that they weren't expecting, we can cover those. We have funds for healthcare and dental and childcare, which, as we know, is a problem not only for the parents who are in our union, but also for our community, so many parents in our community. And if Harvard is successful in cutting out these workers, all of that is going to evaporate for them. We also, as a union, rely on union dues, like all other unions do, in order to fight for our workers. That means paying for lawyers, that means paying for our wonderful staff, who carry a lot of the burden of our organizing and basically everything that comes with running a successful organization. And so with a potentially massive cut in dues, we will be at a much lower capacity to operate, which Harvard has never wanted to have, has never wanted to have any unions on campus, and they fought very hard against the formation of our union, and so it is not surprising that they are seeking to weaken it in this way. And so the solution here is for Harvard to once again recognize these workers as part of our unit, as they have been since our unit's inception. And once again, it falls on us as a union, on our union brothers and sisters, and on our community to fight shame and pressure Harvard into doing the right thing. And so we hope to get the council's support on this resolution and your partnership in this fight for the workers in our union and the workers in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselors Wilson, McGlaughlin would like to sign on. I'd like to sign on Counselor Scott, Counselor Strezko, Counselor Bah. All right, I think I saw Counselor Bah, then Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the good Counselor Burnley for your leadership on this. I have also known Dorothy for the past several years. Thank you for your leadership and just for being a fierce advocate, you know, for, not just for you, but for like the community. And I used to be a member of the union when I was in grad school. I was a teaching fellow, and I was also a teaching assistant, and I was paying my dues because I know the importance of being a member of the union. So I think it's really necessary that we continue to fight, because eternal vigilance is a prize for liberty. So showing up, some of your members that I've seen, just showing up here is an act of resistance. So don't give up. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson, then Scott and Strezko.
Thanks, Mr. President. Harvard versus Trump gets all the headlines, right? But this is Harvard taking advantage of the rollback under Trump of labor gains, and it's really disgusting. As the spouse of someone who I watched get just terribly exploited for five years in a PhD program by the academy, this is just, it's infuriating to see this. Academia is founded on the exploitation of student labor. Let's be real about that, and the best antidote is student unionization. I can't tell you how many times during those five years of grad school that I told my wife how badly they needed a union, after witnessing the latest ridiculous treatment of her or her colleagues. So yeah, I stand in solidarity with HGSU and UAW against this ridiculous action by Harvard. Shame on you, Harvard.
Counselor Scott, then Counselor Strezko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, everybody in this room supports the Graduate Student Union, the workers at Harvard. I am dismayed that we have to be having this conversation right now. I think it is, somebody very wisely told me not too long ago, that this is a time to de-escalate all conflict with anyone who is not actually the enemy. And we are in an environment where conflict is being escalated, where the force of the federal government is being deployed at both institutions and directly at our neighbors. We've seen institutions that have buckled to that pressure, whether it would be a law firm like Paul Weiss or a university like Columbia, who decided that collaboration was the better approach. But here, when Harvard decided to not buckle, to stand up for some principles that most people would like to see them stand up for, there was an outpouring of support from the community, from institutions all over the country to say, "Thank you for doing the brave thing, for doing the right thing." Here, the brave thing, the right thing, is very obvious, and I would urge Harvard to de-escalate this conflict, because your graduate students are not the enemy. Your workers are not the enemy, they are the people that make your institution flourish, the people who make your institution function, the people who make your institution great. And confusing your allies with your enemies is one of the simplest ways to undermine and rot out your entire organization. So I would implore Harvard, please, let's de-escalate this conflict, let's all stay on the same side of fighting for the values that we all share. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Strezko, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be very, very brief. Thank you all for being here tonight. We stand with you. It takes a lot of courage, guts, and just perseverance to speak your truth, and we see you, we will stand with you, we will continue to stand with you, and we are stronger together, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I'll echo that. Thank you for being here. That item is approved.
Item 10.3 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley in support of certain public workers' right to strike.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, Mr. President. You might sense a trend in my items this evening. On the previous item, I spoke a bit about the importance of recognizing the dignity of workers. of workers, understanding what being a worker entitles a person to within an organization. And to that point, on this item, the fundamental power that workers have is to withhold their labor. There is, in my opinion, no more fundamental right than that as a worker. And frankly, as a citizen, no more fundamental right than to withhold labor and our finances from destructive institutions or programs. And yet, so many public workers who make our institutions flourish, operates, from cities and towns to the state government, to federal government, are not given the same rights as so many workers across this nation and across our Commonwealth and in our own community. This resolution is in support of a pair of bills at the State House that would give certain public workers the right to strike. Now, I understand that some folks worry about that, right? We just heard this evening, well, so no one picks up the trash, there's gonna be trash everywhere, you know? And yet, from Counselor Scott's comments to Counselor McLaughlin's comments, I have to believe that people are, will be understanding, and they know that our communities are collectively going through this struggle together. When mega corporations, when institutions such as ours, public bodies, governments, when they do the wrong thing, workers have the right to, and they should have the right to, withhold their labor in pursuit of better working conditions, higher wages, decency, dignity in the workplace and in their lives. For far too long, folks like our teachers have not had the right to strike. Some have, some brave folks have, but they've been punished for it time and time again. We cannot live in a society where workers have their basic human rights respected if they cannot exercise the most fundamental power of laborers, which is the right to strike. And that's why I'm calling on my colleagues to co-sponsor this, to support these, this pair of legislation at the state level, because Somerville's voice does matter. I know it's easy to just, to push aside us and say, we're just a small city that has a particularly progressive bent, but our leadership matters and the voices that we bring to the table matter to push forward these issues. And I want to bring forward some voices of our community right now, and I'd like to sponsor, I'm gonna do it all in one, if that's okay, Jim Kaplan, Marian Wallace, and Colette Burrard.
Counsel Burnley sponsors the three speakers named. Any objection? All right, seen none. Please approach together or one at a time as you like. Just do us a favor and introduce yourself again formally for the record so the clerk can make a note.
Hi, I'm Colette Burrard from Ward Seven. And for the past 17 years, I've been a resident of Somerville, and I've also been a public school teacher in Massachusetts. So back in November of 2023, my local Andover Education Association went on strike. And it was, it was terrifying. It was really risky. And if you know anything about the demographics of Andover and about our district in general, we have traditionally not been, you know, a very assertive kind of union until recent years. But we, we had to do this because for the better part of a year, our school committee was refusing to negotiate with us. And this was on virtually every issue that came before them in bargaining, from expanding recess for elementary students, which wouldn't have cost the district anything to implement, to providing living, living wages for instructional assistants, who topped out in thirty-something thousand dollars a year. Some of them were in our district for two decades, couldn't afford to have health insurance deducted from their paychecks. And their, their attractiveness was not surprising because earlier during the pandemic years, they were refusing to negotiate with us about getting independent contractors to come in and evaluate our HVAC systems so that we could come to school safely during, during a worldwide pandemic. So I'm sure you've noticed that we, Andover is not on an island here. We were preceded by Malden, by Haverell. We were followed by Gloucester, Marblehead, Newton, Beverly. And we've done these, this wave of strikes despite the risks, despite the fact that we've faced potentially crippling fines, because right now, our employers have really no incentive to negotiate with us at all. They know that the law is on their side. They hold that over us. They feel, and, and as such, they feel they have the moral authority to wait us out. They know or suspect that we won't be able to financially withstand a strike action. And so these are gonna continue indefinitely because this is not a sustainable situation. Making strikes illegal for public sector workers isn't stopping strikes. If you want to prevent strikes, then need to support giving us the ability to withhold our labor when our management refuses to negotiate with us. So I really urge you to support this resolution and to, to support all of your workers who deserve the same rights as our private sector labor brethren. Thanks.
Following that up, a second speaker from the Mass Teachers Association, also an alumni of this union in, here in Somerville for thirty-something years, thirty-four years teaching in Somerville. My name is Jim Kaplan. I'm a resident in Ward Six, Lances Home Ward. I have three minutes and three points. Number one, the division between private sector rights and public sector denial of rights is part of the original crafting of labor law in the United States. There were carve-outs on various things designed to assure enough votes to get it through. Those carve-outs established, for example, the exclusion of agricultural labor from the NLRB. Why? Because they were brown-skinned, and they spoke Spanish, and many did not have citizenship at the time. It arranged for the carve-out of black workers, especially in the South, where Southern representatives and senators would not vote for the bill to establish the NLRB and Labor Rights to Wagner Act unless black workers were excluded from labor protections. And it divided into private sector and public sector, and public sector had no right to strike in most states, state-regulated. Therefore, it can be changed in this state. In some ways, we're actually quite lucky under the impending dictatorship of the new Fuhrer, but we actually may be in a better position than some of the private unions that are going to be targets for union busting. Nonetheless, it would be a much better situation if we were increasing in power. And I speak to, tonight to the last point, which is, all the folks around this horseshoe are Democrats with an interest in the invigoration of the Democratic Party in order to stop this drive toward dictatorship that we are in right now. The way to do that is to engage the working class in this country through all its expressions, one of which is the labor movement. And that means taking some risks that some things may jeopardize the apple cart in some areas. Here in Somerville, it won't necessarily do that in the case of the teachers, the education workers, the educators' union bargaining. I was astounded at how cordial the last night's bargaining was when they attained a contract. On the other hand, there was the long, drawn-out, slow torture of what was then the Somerville Municipal Employees Association. Had they had the right to strike, that contract would have been settled much earlier, and we would not have lost nearly as many people out of that union working for the citizens of the city. There may be some conflicts that cause strain. If you want a labor movement to fill the sails of the Democratic Party that all the people here belong to in one wing or the other, then you're gonna have to take some risks. Otherwise, without a labor movement, you saw in the last election, where alienated victims of a bad economy and utter inaction from either of the two parties often on labor issues cost us. That's very clear. It's a small risk, and there's a big gain if you build a labor movement. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marian Wallace. I'm a resident of Ward Four and a regional vice president for SCIU 509, and sit on the private sector of, I mean, the public sector side of the local, which represents 13 state agencies. One of the issues on why we support this, the right to strike, is because we are held at gunpoint, for lack of a better words, because we have no ability to really fight for what our members and the families and clients that we represent deserve. Not all contracts are just about wages. It's about working conditions, but it's also about fighting for the people that reside in our communities. And we are literally held at the state, for, for my local, we are literally held at the state's beck and call as to when they want to sit at the bargaining table. At any point, they can cancel a session. They're not able to, they don't have to come with bargaining items. We have literally stalled negotiations for over a year at times because they control when we meet, because we have no power over them. And if all of you can remember, a couple of years ago, we actually passed a contract, and our money was being withheld from the state. They wouldn't sign the, the increases. It was Christmas time, and our members were going without their money that they bargained for, voted for, but it was sitting. We are held by municipalities, by state electeds, all the time. And we're also held and bound. Our raises come based on income. So we're already at a disadvantage most times than large corporations like Harvard. The least we can do is give us our workers and our members the dignity to have the right to strike for what we deserve and what our families deserve and our communities deserve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. I think, did we read the folks who signed on at the, at the outset?
Not for this one.
Not for this one, okay. Counsel Wilson would like to sign on. I'd like to sign on. Counsel Scott, Counsel Ba, Counsel McLaughlin sign on? Yep. And Counsel McLaughlin would like to speak, then Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. It feels like it's Labor Day already. So it's always good to have these conversations before the city council. And in honor of an early Labor Day, I would like to talk a little about the history of labor and strikes, which were not always allowed for anybody in this country. There were times when the National Guard would break up strikes in support of business owners. Business owners were allowed to lock out employees, but unions were not allowed to strike. People were killed over this, and the struggle for labor continues to this day. And I, I support, first of all, I support this. But, you know, people think, you know, going on a strike is no small thing. It's not a vacation. It's not time off. The workers take a tremendous risk doing this, a risk of not getting paid, a risk of potentially losing their jobs, being replaced by scabs, or whatever you want to call it. There's a chance that things do not work out for the workers. So if a group of people decide to vote in favor of a strike, that's a really big deal. And I don't want to see teachers go on strike. I don't want to see garbage workers go on strike because everybody gets hurt in that process. But they're hurt along with it as well, and they're the people who are dealing with it the most direct. And just to point out to what Jim said as well, you know, the history of this is the Democratic Party was, used to be, organized labor was the backbone of the Democratic Party. Union membership has declined. The Democratic Party has declined. And then there's also instances where, you know, maybe the values aren't aligned like they used to be. So I do see this as a good opportunity to speak up in support of organized labor, people's right to strike, which again is, it's, it's a risk they are taking. It's not a fun decision. I don't think it's a decision anybody who relies on a salary would take lightly. So even a public service employee, I would hope, you know, vital work being done, but people need to be paid for that vital work as well.
Counsel Wilson, and then Scott. And Counsel Strezzo would like to sign on as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah. Thank you, thank you, my colleague, for bringing this forward. And I appreciate the comment about, you know, what do you, how do you, how do you ultimately, like the power of the strike and how you ultimately settle these? It was just yesterday, there was a headline I read from the UK. It was something to the effect of, "Labor, the Labor Party promised to do away with public sector strikes. Why are we seeing so many of them?" And I was shocked for a second. You know, I know, obviously, this new labor is a little disappointing to everyone, but I, I thought, have they, have they really abandoned public sector strikes? And it turns out, labor's approach has been to go give good contracts to their public sector unions over there, and that's how they're avoiding public sector strikes. So it just speaks to what we heard about how the answer to, you know, yes, give the right to public sector employees to strike, and then go do right by them, and you won't have public sector strikes. Simple.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked about a lot of important pieces of organized labor in unions tonight. I want to lift up one thing that Ms. Wallace touched upon, which is that the folks that are working in these public sector jobs are frequently taking lower pay because they believe in an ideal of a public sector that provides services, a government that works for the people, that helps our neighbors. And as politicians who sit around having large conversations about values and then try to implement policy, I don't think it should be undervalued how much the people working in direct service delivery in these public sector jobs also have really strong values around the services that they are providing and the services they would like to provide. You know, when we're talking about DCF, you're talking about people who have the best interests of these families and these children at heart and want to be able to deliver the services that their neighbors deserve, that they would like to be, to receive if they were ever in a horrible, horrible position like that. And not having the dignity, or even the option of the right to strike, puts them farther, much farther away from the decision-making power that they should have when it comes to shaping policy, not just the overarching things that we might talk about around this horseshoe or might get talked about at the State House, but even in the day-to-day implementation of how people are treated, not just the workers on the job, but the people that they're serving. So as with just about all things, removing the impediments to more people being involved in those supermuseum processes, removing the risk that a worker faces, because even with the right to strike, a strike is a scary thing. I believe that these are absolutely essential, and I think they result in a better system where all the people who are part of this incredible, rare idea of a government that serves our neighbors should have the strongest possible voice in, in how those services get delivered. So I, of course, 100% support this, and will continue to support the workers in our public sector who are trying to lift us all up together. So thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be remiss if I don't still give a shout out to the good Counsel at large for your leadership again on this. It's thank you to Colette as well, to Marian Wallace and Jim. And I will also bear on what Jim And I will also bear on what Jim said. It's, I think, just us sitting here is pretty embarrassing that we are having this conversation when we have other bigger issues to be talking about. So I really appreciate you guys, you know, sticking it out and fighting for people. Thank you.
Counselor Bach, would you take the podium for a moment, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just speak briefly on this, just because I can't let this pass. Thank you for all the comments. I won't repeat what was said. I fully sign on to all of them, and thank you to the speakers who came here tonight to support this issue. To be clear, this is the council reaching out to our representatives at the state level, expressing our support for something that is already before them. Whether this will move forward at the state level is very much an open question, at best. But I think it's, to me, I just want to note, and, you know, whatever small ounce of hope I have that this piece of the message gets through to anyone up there making a decision, you know, this isn't wacky left Somerville doing its thing again, right? I love it when we do our thing, right? But this is a fundamental issue for millions of workers across the Commonwealth and the country, and it's, you know, we heard about the dignity of good working conditions, the ability to advocate on behalf of your fellow workers. It's, I've never quite understood why this particular rule exists, that public sector workers can't strike. And, you know, I'll confess, I'm biased. My mom was a second grade teacher, special ed and second grade teacher for her whole life, her working life, and beyond her retirement, actually, and a proud union representative for her school. And I saw how hard she had to fight for anything, even just to get a planning period for her colleagues, which she did. She's very proud of that fact. But without the ability to strike, that was a huge win, just to get a little planning period during the day. So I support this. I hope that the folks in Beacon Hill will really take this seriously, give these organizations the right to advocate on behalf of themselves. And let me just echo the point that we on the left need to do a better job of being inclusive. There are values, there are things upon which, that we all agree upon, and if we aren't able to work with each other and find those common threads, despite however vast the other differences might be, we're going to continue to have a hard time winning on these issues. So it's just, it's incredibly important that we, you know, we focus on where we can collaborate with folks, even when those folks disagree with us on other stuff. That's how we're going to win stuff like this. So thank you for bringing this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does any member want to speak again on this item? Seeing none, is approved.
And the next item is item 10.4, a communication by Counselor Burnley conveying information regarding the reconstitution of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll try to be very brief. And I think this, it speaks exactly, this item speaks exactly to the point you were just making, and the point that Mr. Kaplan made as well. As my colleagues may remember, we made some amends to the Wage Theft Ordinance, specifically to the constitution of the Wage Theft Advisory Committee. I just wanted to touch that up a bit, to remind folks that one of the changes that we made to that committee was that all those positions are to be approved and submitted by the council president and approved by the city council. I've talked with some folks who currently reside on the committee, which is not, effectively does not have quorum yet, and we are going to reach out to various unions to help find representatives who can help us do the important work to ensure that wage theft is not happening in Somerville, and to support the workers who are on the front lines of those fights. So I just wanted to let you all know that when we come back from our, I'll say, I was going to say well-deserved break, we'll see. When we come back from break, I will have a number of suggestions in collaboration with our council president about who can actually fill these seats on the Wage Theft Advisory Committee so that we can do the work to actually report on issues of wage theft, have our first meeting effectively all year, because we've never been able to have true quorum, and move forward in a way that actually does right by these values that we've been speaking toward all night. So just wanted you to have a heads up, there will be several suggestions when we come back from the break.
Okay. That item is approved. And place on copy.
That will return us to the regular order of business. And item 4.2, a resolution by Counselor Davis that the administration submit to the city council and school committee the city's contingency plan in the event of an emergency school closure during the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is something that I submitted at the request of the school committee members, as is, has been the practice, so this will be referred to committee. Madam Clerk, I saw that Dr. Kimono was in the audience. I just want to ask if Dr. Kimono was here to speak on this item, or if you had anything to, that you wish to speak. I'm not sure if you were here for this or some other item, doctor, but I wanted to give the opportunity if there was something you wanted to say here.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Can you hear me? Thank you, through you, President Lance. I was prepared to speak to the actual, the money, the $1.5 million supplemental budget that was set aside by the mayor, so I wasn't ready for a different conversation. But in terms of a contingency plan to address the needs of the district, that is definitely an area of need. So, you know, if there's any discussion or conversation that the city council wants to have around ways to support a contingency plan to address our, the space needs in case of an emergency, I am definitely open and available to have any conversations around that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I acknowledge you and gave you the opportunity. So that will be approved with a copy sent to School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance. That'll be on agenda for a future meeting there, and we'll have an opportunity to really dig into the conversation at that point. Thank you.
The next item then is item 4.3, a communication by Counselor Mbah conveying a report of the Job Creation and Retention Trust Fund.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the June 10 meeting of the Somerville Job Creation and Retention Trust, you know, we review key financial updates, active initiatives, and status of current RFPs. The trustee linkage fee fund remains at approximately $2.2 million with an additional $900,000 expected from upcoming development. The trustees approved $294,200 allocation to the city's summer promise department for childcare advancement programs initiative. Following a discussion on the single proposal received at this collaborative structure, updates were also provided on the Good Municipal Jobs RFP, currently open through October 15. We limited union participation noted during its initial info session, and trustees encourage broader outreach to generate more proposals and shared updates about potential training collaborations, including H-VAC training through Bunkin Hill Community College and facilities in Boynton Yard. The board also discussed planning for the next RFPs informed by partner feedback showing widespread concerns about federal funding cuts and a desire for flexible funding. Trustees explore revising eligible funding categories to better respond to current needs and emphasize the value of more open-ended RFP model. A new subcommittee was formed to draft the RFP and determine scope, timeline, and award structure. So we also have conversation to touch on workforce development pathways such as union partnership and Somerville High School programs, which prepare students for certification and employment. So we close the meeting with the reminder of future meetings and motion to adjourn paths unanimously, as that should be accepted as submitted.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Mbah. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, that item is placed on file.
Item 4.4 is a communication by Counselor Mbah conveying a report of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you again, Mr. President. At this June 12 meeting, the Somerville Affordable Housing Trust review its financial updates and approve several funding requests aligned with its mission to preserve and expand affordable housing. As of May 31, the trust had approximately $8.2 million in its non-CPA account and $2.3 million in CPA funds available for new commitments. Trustees unanimously approved a 129,805 CPA-funded emergency request from the Somerville Homeless Coalition to support four households at risk of displacement from permanent supportive housing. They also extended, you know, Somerville Housing Homeless Coalition's tenant stabilization program contract through November 2026, and approved rolling over $17,000 in home pass admin funds into a new contract. In addition, the trustees approved a new two-year contract for just a start to its TPS, allowing use of up to 10% of administrative costs, affirming eligibility for tenants for up to 100% AMI. The trustees also released 171,000 CPA commitment previously designated for the purchase of 31 through 35 Richardson Street, as the property is no longer owned by the original applicant, Somerville Community Corporation, that is the occupant. So trustees discussed updates to open board positions, including the need to fill seats for nonprofit representative and a banking finance professional, with applications open through July 2025. Staff noted that a new housing program coordinator has been hired to serve as a permanent liaison to the trust. A meeting concluded with recognition and appreciation for outgoing board member Brielle Caderan for her new contribution. And if you indulge me, Mr. President, the trust also met today, July 10, and actually, it was brief, 37 minutes. So the trust met earlier this evening for a short time to announce its end of the fiscal year financial status and to begin planning for the RFP that will be issued in the fall for rent subsidy and similar tenant assistance program. Beginning fiscal year '26, the trust is in fairly solid shape with a total of over $13.5 million available for new commitments. The revenue into the trust has been declining because of the poor real estate market and lack of new zoning linkage. However, the trust has achieved its $13 million of available funds partly by going back and moving unspent money from past years out of several accounts of unfinished programs. So the September RFP that will be written in the next few weeks will give the housing NGOs the opportunity to request funding for their various programs, which help low-income tenants to make up rent areas and cover other deficiencies, and legal costs to avoid eviction and find new housing when facing displacement. I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Thank you, Counselor Mbah. Any discussion? All right. That item is placed on file.
The next item, Mr. President, is item 5.1, an officer's communication from the Director of Economic Development, requesting that this council convene an executive session to discuss strategy regarding the disposition of 90 Washington Street.
All right. Thank you. This item needs discussion that may have to occur in executive session. Is there a representative from the law department to speak to, provide an opinion on the need for executive session? Is there someone here from the law department to confirm that this is appropriate for executive session?
Fair.
Very well. We'll wait briefly while we get a representative from the law department here. That are clean? Join us in the question. Very good. No worries. We're happy to wait while they log in. Songs? I'll take song requests. Madam Clerk, while we're waiting, can we lay this item on the tables, and I can make a few administrative notes to the council?
Of course, Mr. President.
All right, very well. So that item will be laid to the table briefly while we get some from the law department here. Members will notice in their locks a printed copy of the council's rules. I missed this. We used to have updated copies that I always kept in my drawer. I found it useful, and so I asked that we go back to this, to having this handy. Of course, the rules are, this is not a complete set of the rules, because we defer to Robert's Rules of Order, except for where they are superseded by this. So keep that handy if you want. Can come in really handy if you want to use procedural rules to accomplish something that, they could be very useful at times. What was the other thing I was going to note? Captioners joining. Excellent. That is very good news. Oh, I submitted some changes to the committee assignments to the clerk today to replace me as chair, because the president does not serve as chair or vice chair. So in each case, I think for those two committees, the vice chair will assume the chair of those committees. When those go out, if anyone has any concerns for any reason, of course, let me know. We can always adjust. Those will be for the remainder of this term, of course, and in January, whomever is president will make their own determinations at that point for the new council. What else? Do not have representative. Those, the new committee assignments will be sent to the council tomorrow morning?
They will be submitted at the next council meeting, but I wanted to share by email.
Can we make them a late item, since I didn't know I could do that until?
No, I'll send them by email tomorrow.
She'll send them by email tomorrow. Let's just fill in a few holes for, oh, and the other thing is, it's my intent as president, I should have said this right, so those won't be for the full year. It's my intent as president, when, my understanding is for Ward 7, once the election happens, that person will begin to serve immediately. So it'll be my intent to fill that new counselor in for the last few weeks of the session, just to get a head start, I think so. Very well. And we have an attorney here. Excellent. Who do we have? Attorney Selkirk, please introduce yourself, and the request is to confirm that this item is appropriate for executive session.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President. I, yes, the need for executive session is based on the fact that we'll be discussing 90 Washington, and we need to, sorry, I've got the meeting running in the background, and I can't turn it off.
We can hear you just fine, so go right ahead.
Okay, very good.
Right through the background. So the opinion is yes, this is appropriate for executive?
Yep. The opinion is yes, it is appropriate.
Very well. All right, thank you. So that has been established. Counselor Wilson moves to, moves to executive session. That requires a roll call vote, I believe?
On the motion, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With seven counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that motion is approved, and this council will enter executive session.
All right. We will, when we come back, we were going to pick up committee reports, including legislative matters. I know there's some folks here for one of those items, so we'll get to that as soon as we get back. Thank you.
Councillor McLaughlin. All right. If all members would take their seats, with the clerk please call the roll to reestablish quorum.
This is roll call, councillor Wilson.
Present.
Councillor Ewan Campin.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Here.
Councillor Burnley.
Here.
Councillor Said.
Councillor Strezzo.
Councillor Clingan.
Councillor Mbah.
Present.
Councillor Davis.
Here.
With seven councillors present, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. No votes were taken in executive session other than the vote to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the next item? Read the next item.
The next item, Mr. President, is going to be item 6A, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on July 8, 2025.
Let's.
My apologies, we are taking item 6C out of order, so the next item is going to be item 6C, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on July 1, 2025.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet on July 1. We had a discussion on a number of items, well, actually really just two substantive items. One was a proposal to look into, I'm trying to find this item in the agenda, to look into regulation of mopeds or motorized bicycles. The Boston ordinance that was referenced really has to do with insurance on those, and so the discussion was, we kind of focused more on that as well as other ways that we might make the community path safer vis-à-vis motorized vehicles and the types thereof. The item was left in committee, I believe, to look into other ways we might suggest regulations, and so over the course of the recess, we worked with the law department to look for something we can do there. And then the primary discussion was on proposed amendments to the condominium conversion ordinance. I would like to, so that's item 24-1740. I would like to move to sever that item with the intent of placing it on file, the reason being that we have a separate item, which, Madam Clerk, I left my notes up there, is item, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Just the reference for folks, the separate item.
It's item 7.1.
7.1, I thought so. So, my suggestion will be to move to sever 24-1740, which is 62, no, wait, that's not right, 25-1044, which is 65, that had been recommended to be approved, but there is, part of the discussion in committee was to, the administration requested that we establish an October 1 effective date for these amendments. We, because there was some disagreement on exactly how to do that logistically, we left that to be determined. The administration has worked with the clerk's office on proposed language, and that is reflected in item 7.1. So after the report, I will ask that we take up item 7.1, which is the replacement for this item. So first, Madam Clerk, I'd like to request to, or Madam President, I move to sever item 25-1044 with the intent that it be placed on file.
So, Councillor Davis moved to sever item, any discussion or position? So the item is severed?
Mr. President, I'd like to place that item on file.
Okay, bearing any objection, the item is placed on file.
And I will discuss the substance, I'm happy to summarize the substance of item 7.1 separately after we get through the report, so with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Any discussion? The item is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take up item 7.1 out of order, please, if we could.
Madam Clerk, can you read the item?
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to section 7-64, 7-65, and 7-68 of the Code of Ordinances to reduce displacement of tenants and update relocation payments.
Okay, the item is back before us, Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Okay, so just to be clear, this is, this item is a replacement for the item that was in committee that we just placed on file. Substantively, it is exactly the same as the item that was in committee with the exception of the aforementioned October 1 effective date. The substantive changes are the result of a working group that met many times over the past several weeks or months, I'm looking to Councillor Scott for her to correct me if I'm wrong here, but the working group ultimately recommended some minor changes in terms of textual, you know, in terms of the language. The intent, this was a result of requests and concerns that were brought to many councillors that had, from constituents who had experienced a building being sold and then being converted to condominiums effectively finding a loophole in the ordinance, and the request was to the administration, Department of Housing and Stability, housing department, others, to see if there's a way we could mitigate the impacts of that scenario, and ultimately what they came up with, working with the law department to make sure that what was recommended was on solid legal ground, what were the changes that are before you, so substantively is the same changes that have been before the council for many weeks now, discussed in committee a week and a half ago, and reflected in the item that was in committee, and are also reflected in item 7.1 before us. Mr. President, I'd be happy to defer to the good councillor from War Two who served on the working group, if there's more detail he cares to share about the substance of the amendment.
Oh, I want to thank you, Madam Clerk. So I want to recognize that councillor Ewan Campin has joined a council remotely. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague from Chair of Legislative Matters, former Chair of Legislative Matters. This was, actually, an incredible working group of staff, working with members of the condo conversion board, based on, as said, reports from constituents, and the fundamental problem is that there are tenants' rights that should be provided, and that based on the timeline of the ordinance as it currently exists, it has proven to be trivially easy for tenants to be displaced from their apartments, a demo permit to be pursued, and then by the time the condo conversion process actually takes place, those tenants are long gone and unable to be found, and that the waiting process, the timeline, is such that it lines up pretty closely with the normal permitting process that somebody would go through. So the working group went into a great deal of depth on a variety of different approaches, and I got to say, some of them I liked a lot, but based on defensibility, based on efficacy, and frankly also on simplicity, this is a very elegant solution to quite a few of the problems, but in specific, the circumvention of the intent of the ordinance. So this is a very simple change, and for developers who want to do the right thing, it has zero impact whatsoever, right? All of this, all this required is that the people who are in the building.
Your mother.
Get the compensation that we have as a city, and with the state's approval, I have said they are due, to help them relocate and find a place to live.
I was just trying to go upstairs, like, what's the six one on the other? You go down, like, you're talking about going.
In the least. This just goes through as intended, which is, I think, the way we would all hope things would work, right? Follow the rules, everybody wins. It will, and intentionally so, inconvenience people who are attempting to not provide their tenant relocation benefits or their tenant right benefits that the council has established as a policy goal and established in ordinance through several years of work. So I want to, once again, reiterate the things that I gave in Legislative Matters Committee for the people who worked on this, for the folks who brought a spirit of collaboration and exploration to the table in trying to reinforce this ordinance, I feel like this is really straightforward, and I look forward to voting on it as soon as possible. And also, I want to thank the clerk's office for collaborating on the language to get that thorny effective date issue resolved, so thank you again.
Mr. President, if I may add just additional detail, thank you, through you to the good councillor from War Two, thank you for that summary. One point that I thought, I found interesting in the discussion as it was conveyed to the committee was that the ultimate effect, or the intended effect of the proposed changes, which as I said are very minor in terms of the actual language, are to make it more attractive to keep folks in their homes, to not clear out a building, and that, you know, that is, that is truly the driving, as I understand it, that was the driving intent, not, really not anything else other than to make it make more sense for folks who might own the properties or be buying properties, to keep folks in their homes until they're ready to take other actions on it. I will note that during the, during the meeting, the administration noted that there had been some, a request from some constituents to not take action this evening, or that evening, at the evening of the committee meeting, and to that end, you know, we did ultimately recommend approval, but I noted very specifically that if folks did have concern, that at that point I had not heard any of those concerns directly, but certainly, you know, that provided us a week and a half opportunity for folks to weigh in. I have received some feedback since that time, as I imagine other. I imagine others have as well. But, and we have four items that are also on the agenda this evening, that are communications regarding that, so I just wanted to call folks' attention to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davis, and may the record reflect that Counselor Klingon has joined us remotely. Madam Clerk, okay. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. We mentioned Counselor Ewan Campan. He'd mentioned last week in the Legislative Matters meeting that there's no rush to vote on this proposal. The proposed ordinance changed tonight, given the October 1 effective date. Given that we have seven of us here in the chamber, and I have two joining us here remotely, I think it makes a lot of sense that Counselor Davis referred to the feedback about, you know, just taking a beat, just to table it for our next meeting, in order to give counselors just time to know exactly what this is and know it frontwards and backwards for good two-way communication with the public about it, and to have all 10 of us here for that discussion and that vote. I spent time earlier today watching that presentation from Legislative Matters last week, reading the legislation, talking to our legislative and policy analyst. I'm personally in a good place myself, as a result. I support this. I think it accomplishes the stated goals with some really simple, clever incentivization. I'm not going to pretend that I think that, you know, all of us are in that same place, have had that same opportunity to get to that comfort level, so I think this is about the process. And I think it makes sense to just table it for the next meeting and take it up. And so I'll move to table the item. It's item 7.1 until our next meeting.
On the motion.
There's a motion on the table. On that motion, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the motion. I'm comfortable with that as well, as I said in the meeting a week and a half ago. Certainly want to make sure folks have time to weigh in. My sense is that they have now, but certainly, some of the, I read all the communications that came in. I would actually ask that those four items be also laid on the table so that they remain in the agenda, so we have that context if folks want to, you know, review them over the summer. There were some concerns raised that were not specifically discussed in the committee meeting, and I will take the opportunity over the recess to touch base with economic development and other folks to just get their feedback on some of those concerns, make sure there's, find out if there may be unintended consequences that we haven't considered. You know, I won't opine on whether I think there are or not. But I did have a conversation with staff from Intergovernmental Affairs today, and it's the administration's position, and it certainly would be my position as well, that, you know, regardless of taking action on this this evening, if this motion to table fails, or whether we take it up at the next meeting of the council, which will be the end of August, that that October 1 date would not change. So effectively, the, you know, the effect of these changes would not happen any later. We effectively, we essentially have a bit of time to make sure that everyone has a chance to weigh in, that we all have a chance to consider those views, without, if we then do decide to go forward, it changing the effective date in any way. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Any other conversation on this? Show, hand it to the chair for, you know, Madam Clerk, may we have to recommend if we need a roll call vote or not?
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need to roll call that. I will just clarify for the record that this is going to be item 7.1 as well as 9.8, 10.18, 10.19, and 10.20, all of which are public communications.
Any further discussion on the motion to lay those items on the table? Any objection? All right, seeing none, those will be laid on the table until the next meeting of the council. Next item.
And the next item then will be returning to the regular order of business, item 6A, a report of the committee on finance, meeting on July 8, 2025.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met on Tuesday, July 8, for an hour and 13 minutes. With four of five members present, we made very efficient work of a 14-item agenda. In addition to the minutes from our six budget season meetings from last month, we recommended by a 4-0 vote that you approved tonight, authorization to dispose of unclaimed bicycles through a program in conjunction with the YMCA whereby Somerville residents can apply to get free tuned-up bikes, a long-delayed response to an order by counselors Ewan Campan and Klingon back in 2021, a new contract with Blue Bikes. I'd made some requests for some new stations in areas of our city that look to be currently underserved by Blue Bikes, an extension of a lease agreement for the parking lot off Grove Street between Elm and Highland Ave, and a time-only extension with the Franklin Cummings Institute for Job Training, for the Job Creation and Retention Trust. We also marked as withdrawn three items that the administration requested to be withdrawn. The last two of those IDs number 25-1163 and 25-1164 are being replaced with two new items submitted for tonight's meeting. Those are agenda items 7-2 and 10-5. The former is due to changes prior to Tuesday night's meeting, while the latter is due to the hours of the civic space area being amended from an original 8:00 a.m. to sunset, as stated in that original item that's being requested be withdrawn, instead simply referring to the city's standard hours for our parks by ordinance, which is currently 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. With that, I ask this committee report be accepted as submitted. Thanks.
All right, that report is accepted, and that brings us two items before us. We're going to roll call the acceptance of the committee report.
On the committee report, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that committee report is accepted, and that places two items before this council for a roll call vote. The first of those is item 25-0978, the Fourth Amendment to a lease for the Grove Street parking lot. On that item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved. And the next is item 25-1160, the Final Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Financing Agreement for the 299 Broadway Project. On that item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved.
All right, very well. Thank you, everyone. Next item.
Counselor, would you like to continue with the regular order of business or take additional items out of order that require some roll call votes?
Let's do the latter, since we have folks joining us here remotely, and we can make use of their services while they're here.
So the next item that this council will take up then will be item 7.2, which is item 25-1238, a request of the mayor requesting approval of a maintenance agreement and landscape management and maintenance plan for the future Sewell Park at the 299 Broadway Development.
Mr. President, can we also take up item 10-5 along with this? As they're both 299 and Broadway items? These are the two aforementioned replacement ones.
Sure. Item 10.5 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a public access and maintenance access easement for 299 Broadway property owner LLC. And the will of the council is to take one roll call vote for both of these? Is that what I heard?
Seeing and nor hearing any objections? Any discussion on the items?
On both of those items.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, I'll thank the developer, their attorney, our law department, and IGA for turning this around really quickly. They got that replacement item done and up in Legistar in under 24 hours, so excellent job, everyone.
And on both of those items, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those items are approved.
Very well. Next item out of order.
All right. The next items that require a roll call vote are several from the administration that have been requested for immediate consideration. I will get there in a minute, I promise. I got to catch up to the 10s here. So that is items 7.3 through 7.5, the first of which, item 7.3, is a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $1.5 million from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the School Department to fund collective bargaining agreements.
Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
On the item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved. The next item then is item 7.4, a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $1,045,000 from the Participatory Budgeting Stabilization Fund for the purpose of implementing the winning projects from the second participatory budgeting cycle. All right then. On the item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved. And item 7.5 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $800,000 from the Facility Construction and Renovation Stabilization Fund for renovations to the Cummings School for the Warming Center project.
The item?
On the item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With nine counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is approved. And there is one further item being requested by the administration for immediate consideration, and that is item 10.6. Let me find that here. A request of the mayor requesting approval to appropriate $3,892,796 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the Police Department Other Lump Sum Payments Account to fund retroactive payments in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement with the Somerville Police Employees Association.
Discussion?
On the item, Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Yes.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Klingon. We lost him in the ocean. Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
With eight counselors in favor, none opposed.
That's a yes for me, Madam Clerk, sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any further items that the administration is requesting action on this evening?
There is nothing else that I am aware of that requires a roll call vote.
Okay, so we're going to take a brief recess to shuffle some papers, and we'll be back in two minutes. All right, going to call this meeting back to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan. Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Said. Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
With seven counselors present and three absent, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. The administration has asked that we take up items 7.6 through 7.10 out of order now, so that we can let the good folks in the administration who are here on those items go home for the evening, which I'm more than happy to do. So if you could please read item 7.6.
Item 7.6 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to accept and expend a $3 million grant with no new match required from the Mass Works Infrastructure Program to the Department of Infrastructure and Asset Management for the inner belt and brick-bottom pedestrian crossing and associated project area.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, this was just, we figured this would be the one item sent to Finance, so why send one item to Finance? Let's just do it tonight.
Very well. Any discussion on the item? Any questions? We have staff here to address any? All right, seeing none. On the item. No need. That item is approved.
The next item is item 7.7, a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Daquan Goodnow to the position of police officer.
Madam Clerk, could we read in 7, 8, 9, and 10 as well?
Of course, Mr. President. Item 7.8 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Andrew Pasqualino to the position of police officer. Item 7.9 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Benji Antoine to the position of police officer. Item 7.10 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Victor Souza to the position of police officer.
Thank you very much. So as a reminder, Counselor Ewan Campan, Chair, who serves as Chair of Confirmation Appointments, suggested from a process standpoint that for initial confirmations, we don't send these to committee, that we approve them at the council level that evening. I'm inclined to follow that process unless there's an objection. All right, seeing none. Do we need any votes? All right, well, those are approved, then. Thank you very much.
And that will once again return us to the regular order of business, Mr. President, and item 6B, a report of the committee on housing and community development, meeting on June 30, 2025.
Counselor Strezzo, thank you for your patience.
Why, thank you, Mr. President. So we met on Monday, June 30, at 6:00 p.m. in City Hall and virtually. We had two of the three members present. We had Counselor Ewan Campan and I. We discussed the Counselor McLaughlin's order, talking about the Housing Bond Bill and how Somerville may strengthen its protections and the condominium conversion and tenant protection laws. And I'm going to skip ahead to convey to you some really important protection laws. And I'm going to skip ahead to convey to you some really important, so read that in a minute, but I want to skip ahead to convey to you some information about the sealing of evictions and the recent state's legislation, which is now in effect. Technically, May 5 of this year, now tenants can petition the court to seal records from no-fault evictions, such as when a landlord sells the property significantly increases rent or dismisses the case. So please convey that to your constituents. This is in effect, and the Office of Housing Stability is working very hard to make sure to get the information out to tenants, to everybody. We're working alongside Cambridge with that. So look for workshops. There've already been six so far, but the information is trying to get out there as fast as possible. We also discussed the economic impact of small businesses as a result of recently, recent federal immigration policies. We had Deputy Director Dana Whiteside to discuss some older efforts, such as the business impact of packets that have, it's 1033, so bear with me here, that they created, and also some grants that are still happening. Oh, the Leasing Handbook, that was presented last year, but he reminded us that it exists and really encourage you to pass that along to your constituents as well. We also talked about how the efforts being put forward of how we can get, how small businesses can obtain tax IDs so that, you know, when we have our twice-a-yearly-year events sliced of the city, that maybe they can be contracted with the city to be one of the vendors. That's important. So Deputy Director has said that these programs exist, and they are willing to help make that possible. So tell your constituents to reach out to economic development so that they can be part of that. We also talked about the, we talked about our one-year action plan for community development block grant. We had our Director of Finance and Community Development, Ellen Sico, it's 1030, so talking about just the updates that have happened since the last year. And I want to emphasize this, that for the first time in 20 years, the city will be fully leveraging the financing capabilities of the community development block grant. And this will require the city to make its annual entitlement payment of $500,000, $500,000. And that will result in significantly long-term benefits for the community. So that's happening now. It's inactivated. That's exciting. And then we also talked about more impact on small businesses and how construction plays a role in that. We kept it in committee, so I'd love to hear more conversations and what you're experiencing, colleagues, and always welcome to discuss that in committee as well. But I think that conversation has to be happening ongoing, especially with what the impacts we're having federally and with all the construction and digging up of streets, et cetera, that we're all hearing about. So I ask that these minutes be submitted as, or accepted as submitted.
Any discussion? All right, minutes are approved. Thank you.
The next item is Item 7.11, a request of the mayor requesting that this city council schedule a joint public hearing with the Somerville Redevelopment Authority regarding updating the 90 Washington Street Demonstration Project Plan.
Any discussion on the item? So the suggestion is this code of land use. If there's any objection, this topic was previously discussed in finance, but that was, in my recollection, all committees of the whole, so it really wasn't a finance item. I think that land use is the best spot for this, so if there's no objection, that'll be referred, approved with a copy of land use.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the Chief of Police conveying a biannual report pursuant to Section 2-6G of the Code of Ordinances.
Any discussion? All right, that item's placed on file.
Item 8.2 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying block party licenses issued.
Woo-hoo, block parties. Any discussion? Counselor Wilson?
Through the President to the Clerk. In the budget this year, there was a line for block party supplies. Are we now able to give those out to people?
Through the President, Counselor, that's an excellent question, and I'm happy to answer that we have dropped the scope of work, and we are sourcing vendors. So we are in the process of obtaining quotes, and once a vendor is selected, we will certainly be happy to announce the coordination of that process. It is not quite there yet. We do understand that we are squarely in the middle of block party season, and we are moving as urgently as we can, but the contracting process is a lengthy one.
Mr. President, the contracting process is definitely a lengthy one. So, yeah, I appreciate that update. I was just asked about this last night, actually, by a constituent, so, thanks.
All right, very well. Thank you. That item is placed on file.
That brings us to Item 9.1.
Counselor Burnley?
Oh, thank you. Through the Chair, I'd like to waive the readings of Items 9.1 through 9.6, as well as 10.8 through 10.16, and ask that they be approved.
Any discussion on those items? Counselor Scott?
Mr. President, I just wanted to call out my particular enthusiasm for the July 19 Honk Community Concert happening on the Lincoln Park Soccer Field.
Very well. I'll jump on board the PSA train and call out the September 4 or 5 community event at Davis Square. This is the second event, the second annual event being held, sponsored by the Somerville Foundation in collaboration with Davis Square Merchants. It was a really fun event last year, hoping to build it more this year and get everyone together out in the streets, so look forward to that. Seen no discussion. Those items are approved.
Item 9.7 is a public communication from Courtney Foster submitting comments regarding Item 25-1170 in support of the Climate Superfund Bill.
That is placed on file.
Item, let's see, we're almost there. Item 10.7 is a public communication from Margaret Saperk submitting comments regarding a ceasefire.
10.17?
10.17 is exactly the number that it is.
That item is placed on file.
Not at all the number that I read.
The hour is late, as Counsel White would say.
And there's one more. 10.21, a public communication from John Angeloni submitting comments regarding Davis Square.
That item is placed on file. I will note that I had a conversation with the Director of Engineering on the item just today, so we're working on addressing that.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening.
Are there any late items?
I see no further items before this council. I believe there may be a motion to be made from the floor.
Motion to be made from the floor? Yes, of course. Rather than it being a late item, we're going to do it as a motion from the floor. Okay. The President moves that this council congratulates Counsel Said on the birth of her child, who arrived this week, July 3, I believe. My understanding is everyone's doing well, very happy, and we look forward to having one more set of hands to help us all get our job done at the council. So congratulations, Counsel Said. That item is approved.
And there are no further items before this.
All right. Counselor McGlaughlin moves to adjourn. Thank you all.